Welcome to the September 18, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. Flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Please rise, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation today will be led by Reverend Skip Lindeman of La Cañada Congressional Church.
Let us pray. Oh God, thank you for this day and this night, and thank you for all of our blessings. Thank you also for the responsibility of being elected to do the people's business. Be with us as we do that, the people's business, and give us the courage to do what is right, not only this night, but always. Help us to be not only good public servants, but also faithful servants always to your holy will. Amen.
Will you read the report?
The agenda for the September 18, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 13, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next.
At item 3A, we have the agenda preview for the meetings of September 25, 2012.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for the Glendale Housing Authority for September 25th, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, to commence at 3:00 PM, we do have a Glendale City Council and Glendale Successor Agency meeting. This is a joint meeting, Director of Community Development, successor agency properties, and receivables. Also that afternoon for September 25th, we do have a Glendale City Council meeting at 3:00 PM, special public meeting. We have three items, Director of Human Resources, this is report on the pension reform bill, AB 340, Director of Human Resources, and Administrative Services Finance. This is regarding the Public Agency Retirement Service, PARs, supplementary retirement plan for the IBW. Director of Human Resources, memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and the Management Association, and this is on behalf of the fire sworn managers. That evening for the City Council meeting at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items, Chief of Police, the Wellness Consultant for the Police Department, Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, procurement of interoperable police and fire communications console technologies, Chief of Police and Fire Chief, this is regarding the 2011 U.S. Department of Homeland Security, L.A. Long Beach Urban Area Security Initiative, grant award. Again, Chief of Police and Fire Chief, this is the 2011 U.A.C. grant program, and this is an award of grant as well. Chief of Police again and Fire Chief, this is procurement of interoperable communications console technologies for the Police Department specifically. Chief of Police, maintenance services for the Police Department jail low voltage control system. Lastly, on consent, we have interim General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, status of activities to meet the Glendale Water and Power renewable portfolio standard. We do have adoption of ordinances, ordinance authorizing execution of a development agreement in connection with the Glendale Triangle Project. And we have three items under action, City Treasurer, changes to the city's investment policy, Director of Public Works, public sale of surplus city-owned properties located at 765 and 749 Glenmore Boulevard, as well as 1644, 48, and 52 Gladys Drive. And lastly, Director of Community Development, implementation of the Glendale Fresh Air Ordinance, options for consideration to facilitate hookah use, and options for addressing secondhand smoke exposure in multifamily dwellings. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Next, please.
Item 3B, proclamation designating September 19, 2012, as "It Can Wait, No Texting While Driving," pledge day.
All right, I have a proclamation to read. Motium. Proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas the City of Glendale holds the health and safety of its young adults as a chief concern, text messaging is the main mode of communication for most American teenagers, with half of all teens sending between 21 and 70 texts a day. Ninety percent of American teenagers expect a reply to a text message within five minutes. Texting takes one's eyes off the road for an average of five seconds. In an AT&amp;T survey, 43% of American teenage drivers admitted that texting while driving, even though 97% know it's dangerous. A Virginia Tech Transportation Institute study showed those who send text messages while driving are 23 times more likely to crash." I think I'll repeat that. "The Virginia Tech Transportation Institute studies show that those who send text messages while driving are 23 times more likely to crash. A driver who sends text messages while driving not only jeopardizes his or her safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrian, and other drivers. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim September 19, as 'It Can Wait, No Texting While Driving,' pledge day, and urge all citizens to make a lifelong commitment to not text and not drive." Mr. Menuchyan. We have three teenagers. I'll let you present.
Thank you, actually, and certainly we see on a weekly basis incidents on all our streets as it relates to texting and driving, and if this is a way to get the message out to the community as well as the youth, not to text and drive, or pull over if you need to text, or stop to text, I think that is a great message to get out to the community. So, thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you so much for joining with us in this. This is, Mayor, thank you for going through those facts and figures. Probably the one fact that hit me the hardest, because I have a daughter who's 18, another one 22, is the fact that 75% of all teenagers say that they've seen their parents text and drive. So what we're talking about here is, we have to set example for our kids. If we don't want them to text and drive, guess what? We better not be doing it also. There's some different things that you can do. Thank you for making awareness of tomorrow, which is the No Texting When Driving Day. You can go to our website, itcanwait.com. It's all one word, sort of squished together, and there's all sorts of different tools on there, from things you can talk to your kids about, to taking the pledge. You can also go ahead and take the pledge by just texting the word "pledge" to 28822, and you can automatically sign up for the pledge not to text. It's just an awareness program. Since, in the past month, since we started this program, more than a half million people have signed up, signed the pledge not to text. That's a huge impact. There's lots of different ways of getting the word out. The city has a tremendous website. Your Police Department has done a tremendous job of getting the word out, and thank you for joining with us on this very important occasion. So, thank you very much. It's about saving lives and doing the right thing for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. All right, next, please.
Item four, City Council or Staff Comments.
Okay, before we start with the actual City Council comments, I have a motion to approve Steve Zern as the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. I'll have Ms. Najarian read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council, acting pursuant to Glendale Charter, Article 4, Section 4, Article 14, excuse me, Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2, and Government Code, Section 54957.1A5, hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Stephen Zern as the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. Further, this motion shall be the written statement of appointment of a person of recognized attainment as set forth in Charter, Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2. Pursuant to Article 24, Section 10 of the City Charter, the Civil Service Commission shall certify Mr. Zern's appointment to the Director of Administrative Services Finance.
It's certifying to the Director.
Shall certify Mr. Zern's appointment to... We're going to certify it to the Director of Administrative Services Finance. Okay. I thought we had a curveball there at the end.
I'll take the roll call first.
Should we get a second on that?
Yes. Second by Mr. Weaver, and we'll take a roll call first.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. So with that motion, Mr. Zern, you are officially appointed... What do you do on that? Do you put two titles now?
Yeah, just like the business card, two on each, one on each side. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Mr. Ochoa, thank you. As I stated, when you named me interim General Manager, it's certainly an honor. I'm flattered by your support and your faith in me and my ability to not only manage the Great Water and Power Department, but also continue to watch over the Public Works Department as well. I'm excited about the opportunities we have in Water and Power. We've got a little bit of a tough road we're dealing with now, and some challenges ahead of us, and in this last three and a half months, I've been able to just scratch the surface, but I can tell you, there's a lot of potential there, and I'm looking forward to turning this around and getting together with all of the staff members to get this utility back up on its feet financially and otherwise, and put ourselves back in that position of prominence where we deserve to be. And I appreciate all the support from my family, staff members, and friends. You can see, I filled the chambers.
Yeah, and I'm sure they're here to support you.
Although, something tells me that's not exactly why a lot of them came out. But I can't do it without the support of these folks. You know, at this level, you know, I'm sort of a traffic cop and a coach, and it takes quality individuals in order to make the departments, both of these departments, run as well as they do, and I have the best. And I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them, and it is an honor and a privilege to serve with them. So with that, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to it.
Well, Mr. Zern, I'll start by saying that what's impressed me throughout the years is the kind of people that you seem to gravitate to and work well with, and that's the rank and file at Public Works. I'm always talking to the refuse truck drivers, and the forklift operators, and all the rest of them, and they always seem to think you're a fair guy, and you do a good job of representing them and working with them, so I think it's more than just working with engineers, and working with managers, and working with vendors, and the contracts, and all the rest of it, but your ability to work with the guys and women that actually do the job, the hands-on job. So, I think you're going to do very well at GWP, and I'm very, very happy for you and your family.
Steve, I'd just like to say that I think you've earned our collective respect for what you have done in the past, Public Works, and in the first 90 days, for Water and Power. So, you've got great credibility with us. Hope your family can spare you some more time away. I'll see you tomorrow night.
Yes.
You'll be out again tomorrow night. It's going to be just about every night somewhere, but you're the one that wants it, so congratulations again.
I also want to join my colleagues in congratulating you, and during the last campaign, I made an issue out of P cards, and as soon as he went in the department, he pulled over 50 P cards and turned them in, which was what I expect from our managers, to make sure that the taxpayer funds are being spent efficiently, and I want to thank you and congratulate you. I think you will be a great manager, as you are for Public Works.
You have done a great job at Public Works, Steve. I knew you when you were Assistant, it wasn't that long ago, Assistant Public Works Director, and you did a great job in that role, and now we're, you know, that's what happens when you do a job well, people pile on, so we're piling this one on you. I'm sure you can handle it without any problem at all, and I know you will be fair to both the residents and our employees, and bringing about the best for the entire city.
What GWP really needs is a strong and very fiscally aware General Manager, and I'm absolutely convinced that you're that person. I've said for many years that Public Works is one of our best functioning departments, and I get emails all the time from residents talking about how great their interactions were with Public Works office, you know, people out in the field, and I know that you're going to be doing the same thing with, we already have a great workforce at GWP, and I think you're the right person to take us into the next decade with GWP, so congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to do the other promotion this time?
No, we'll do that later.
Just a wait.
Okay.
He's an exception. Family's here.
Next. Rita. Next.
Item five are consent items. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. We have items A through C.
I'll move the consent calendar at five.
I'll abstain on the September 11 meetings.
Second. Okay. I have a speaker card. Did you want to pull one C from the consent item? Is that what the speaker is?
But, I mean, yeah, if it was for the closed session, it's untimely, so you don't have to take it.
All right, roll call, please.
Item six are oral communications.
No, for the consent items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mayor. Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Now, item six, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, I have a number of cards. Varej Martian, followed by Martin Maruto.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff, and the community. First, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Varej Martian. I'm one of the Board of Directors of the Glendale Historical Society. I'm here today on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society and the Board of Directors to announce our wonderful annual fall home tour, which is our largest event. This year's home tour is themed Glendale's Golden Age, and will showcase five distinctive homes built in the 1920s and 30s. One of them features the work of Ben Sherwood, who designed Snow White Cottage in Las Feliz, and we're also showcasing a charming storybook courtyard. The tour will be held on Sunday, September 30, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and the homes are located on a convenient two-and-a-half-mile, easily accessible route. Tickets may be purchased at www.glandalehistorical.org, or Glendale Arts box office at the Alex Theater, Americana, and Glendale Community College. And at the day of the tour, they can be purchased at the Alex Theater starting 10:30 AM. Tickets are 22 each for members, and 32 for non-members until September 26, and 27 for members, and 37 for non-members after September 26 and the day of the tour. This year's sponsors of our tour, which we greatly appreciate, is GC Properties, and also the Glendale Adventist Medical Center. Your support and attendance is greatly appreciated to keep our city's history alive, and also to show what Glendale is all about. And I encourage you again to come to the September 30 tour, which is on Sunday, 1-2-4. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Martin Maruto, followed by Leon Mayor.
Good evening, Honorable Council, staff, Mr. Mayor. We, please don't misunderstand the attendance of our membership here. What you're seeing here is a group of frustrated men that work for the city. They've been working very diligently, as you all know, and you've all given them credit for. This is not an easy time for any of us, and we have asked that we get a response from management for our last contract proposal. It's been two months since we submitted our last proposal, and we have not had any response. We have had some contact with Mr. Matt Doyle, and he has been trying to keep us calm and keep us, you know, apprised, but there is just a certain amount of time that our guys can take without having any response at all, and for us to not have any discussion. We would ask also that the council would take the time to speak to local 18 as well. We would like to talk to you, council members, and have a discussion individually about your issues, so we can understand yours better, and so that you can understand ours better. That has not happened up until this point. So what we're asking is that you meet with us, that you meet with us and a group of our guys, so we can just talk about some of the external issues that we have here. Obviously, we have not had that conversation, other than in negotiations with the filter of an attorney, and that has not been successful in the end. We have completed some reasonable agreements. We've gotten to a good place in some things, but ultimately, we're not where we want to be. And I know you're not where you want to be, so we would just like to have a conversation with you all. You know, that's all we're asking, that you meet with us, and basically, all we want right now is a contract. Thank you.
Mr. Respond at the end.
Yes, briefly.
Yeah, okay, we can respond, we can... Why don't you stay in the chamber, so we can respond in a minute, as soon as this final speaker... We have one more speaker, and then we can respond. Leon Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero, Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the library and the Friends of the Library, and I'll try to be brief, although I have a few announcements to make, and I know you have some important things to do after I finish. This is a heads-up on our program called "The Black Isle" by Sandy Tan. That's this Thursday, 7:00 at the library. Parking is validated at the structure across the street from the library. We expect a good crowd. This is a lady who was born in Singapore, educated at the University of Kent in the British Islands, and also Columbia University, where she received outstanding Mark's Master Degree in Theater Arts and Writing. She is a filmmaker from Pasadena, but she's written this book based on old stories from the family about this aisle in Indonesia. It's a book about ghosts, and very mysterious and scary things, and it should be great to come there, get a night off, and have fun listening to Sandy Tan. Now, that's on the 20, that's the 20th, that's Thursday. Now, on the 27th, we have another interesting event, "The Road to Smyrna." The author is Antonio Arslan. She's Italian, Armenian, and "The Road to Smyrna" is a book, we haven't heard much about this story yet, but she's lectured all over the world about other things, including this book, and it starts in Aleppo in 1916. That Aleppo is from Syria, if it's still standing, we know a lot of things are happening in Aleppo. This was happening at Aleppo in 1916, when they, this family escaped from the march to the desert and ended up in Smyrna, which is in the coast of Turkey and Armenia. So that is on the 27th, 7:00, and I passed around a lot of papers before the meeting started today, and I wanted to call your attention to the fact that the Friends of the Library has a new director. Her name is Elise Calfiyan. She's tremendously qualified. If you read the quarterly book that we send out, the Quarterly Review, you can find out all about her and other of our activities. And also, we're having a book sale on the 29th and 30th of September, and you can come to the library and find out about all these things. Doesn't cost you a nickel. My doing this doesn't cost the city a nickel, and that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ochoa, did you have a response to the speaker?
Yes, sir. Certainly, we can appreciate the level of frustration. We are engaged in good faith bargaining and negotiations, and it doesn't move fast. Since June of 2011, we've had 21 meet and confer sessions. The idea that we have received an economic proposal two months ago and have not yet responded to it, I suppose could be offset by the fact that we've gone four months at one point without receiving a response to our economic proposal. But this isn't about a quid pro quo or tit for tat. Absolutely is not. The city is working diligently on this particular matter, but working, at this point, on the issue of budget and reorganization, and, as you heard Ms. Beers articulate earlier in the meeting, on the issue of the supplemental retirement benefit, the retirement incentive specifically for IBW. Now, why are we working on the retirement incentive as opposed to the economic proposal? Well, because we didn't receive approval to begin offering that benefit until very recently. All of our other eligible employees in GMA, GCEA, accepted that benefit. We went through the reorganization process during the spring and into the summer. Now we're having to replicate that very same level of activity for a different bargaining group, and that's not anybody's fault, but it is a fact. So we will work through this particular issue in good faith, as we have, because what the council has been clear, as you know from previous discussions that you've had here, comments that you've made publicly, in listening to members from IBW, is that the council is open-handed with this issue, not closing the door on folks who didn't accept it earlier, but rather magnanimously offering this benefit to those employees that still desire it, as now elected by, or allowed by their bargaining group. That's all there is really to this matter. Meeting and conferring, especially over an inaugural memorandum of understanding, is very complex and takes a good deal of time. We are, and I believe have, made a honest, good-faith effort to get to the point where we are. We are continuing to evaluate the proposal. We will continue to meet with council in closed session as we cost out the proposal, but right now, we are focused on the reorganization that is impacting GWP up to and including the retirement incentive, and I doubt that anybody wants us to take that away, because that's not in the best interest of the entire organization, of which GWP is a part. So we will continue working in that direction. I have seen the emails from Mr. Doyle to Mr. Marufo and Mr. Corona. That level of discussion will continue, and it will continue in good faith and honest brokering.
Anything, Garcia? All right. Okay, that's the response. Next speaker is Herbert Milano.
Really? Is it in the three-minute section? There is, this is, there's no... On the agenda. Oh, okay, I guess you're right.
Margaret Hammond's after Ms. Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. This afternoon, I could not stay to get an opportunity to speak during the special City Council meeting with regard to initiating those two, the process of that $35 million bond measure for the water utility. You also have that $25, $24 million reissuing of a bond, I guess, to pay a higher bond that the city has with regard to the electricity. My concern about having these types of issues presented as a special session in an afternoon, when very few people have an opportunity to address this issue, I think is not a good move when it comes to transparency. I think that every time the city goes into debt, or is about to go into debt, even if you're simply considering hiring the consultants to evaluate it, that it should be done at this session, in the evening, when people have an opportunity to assess this in regard to the whole perspective of the city's finances. In the year 2000, the long-term liabilities, bonds, and other long-term obligations of the City of Glendale was about $118 million, according to the CAFRA. 118 million. 118 million. In the year 2000, Councilman Weaver was present. Mr. Quintero, you and Mr. Manukian, you were here as well in the year 2000. Well, since that time, now we have well over $500 million in debt, including the bonded obligation. You know, it's close to a five-fold increase in the city's debt, and I know that part of the reason why you are forced to move in that direction, especially to supplement water and power, is because somewhere along the way, we lost the concept of pay-as-you-go, putting money aside to make sure that you pay for the infrastructure that is needed for the water utility and the electrical utility. And you lost that when you began to transfer money and felt compelled to increase those amounts in order to sustain the general fund. So you borrow money, you transfer the money over to the general fund. It's equivalent to borrowing money to support the general fund. The fact that you go through the water and power in order to do so, it means that your general fund was not properly funded through the regular taxation means and revenues. Now, as we now know, a lot of those transfers in the water utility were, in fact, illegal, were against the California Constitution. But you felt compelled to do that because the promises that you made in 2001 concerning the pension obligation could not be sustained adequately. You simply could not, because by the time they told you that it was going to cost us nothing, the CalPERS, the pension calculation on the assets was based in 1999, when there was a significantly high asset valuation on the technical stocks that the CalPERS had invested in. But by the time you agreed on it in April, it had already collapsed, or it was in the process of collapsing. So now, in order to be able to pay those obligations and that guarantee at 7.25% at that time, it was not sustainable. The increase of tens of millions of dollars was not going to be sustainable in case the city or the government or the economy sustained any kind of setback. In every decade, there's about two economic downturns, traditionally, throughout the history, and it gave us no safety net. So now, we are in the process of having to continually borrow, and by the time we finish borrowing on this and paying the principal and the interest, you're basically paying twice as much overall for the assets and the infrastructure that you need. I think this kind of clarity and this type of transparency is absolutely needed to be displayed and presented in the financial statements that are coming up. Two years ago, the previous city manager removed that information on the overall pension obligation. I don't know why, but I know that I was using those numbers to present to the city council again and again that the pension obligations were going to increase, and I've been doing it for years. So it is my guess that he decided to just recommend that it be pulled out so that it doesn't even appear on the financial statements. It's my recommendation that it be put back, clearly identifying the future obligations year to year for at least the next 15 years. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, colleagues on council, please excuse me. I have a forum to attend in the city of Pasadena with several of their city council members regarding the 710 Tunnel, and I wish you the best of luck with the rest of the agenda.
We have one speaker card. I think we can handle it.
But what a speaker, but what a speaker you're going to have.
I'll be sure and record it for you. Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Your Honor, mayors, members of the council, city staff, and the members here and at home. My name is Margaret Hammond, longtime resident of Glendale. Very involved resident, have been for umpteen years. First off, my free bulky item announcement, and I'm going to keep making it. There's still those bulky items laying out there. People don't call on them. I wish I had a way not to, I don't text or anything like that, but a way, as I go along, to record where they all are. The number, 818-548-3916. Please call for those bulky items. I have another thing, graffiti removal. We have two trucks that do graffiti removal. I understand at the last meeting that I attended with the group Glendale Beautiful, Clean and Beautiful, that only one truck is in operation, only have a driver for one truck. We cannot allow that. Those trucks are, not only the cost of them, but if we do not keep that graffiti out of Glendale, we're going to be right back where we were 20 years ago. We need to keep those trucks on the road, those drivers. Thank you. Now, a very contentious thing. I bought, when I bought in Adams Hill 54 years ago, it was R1, or maybe not even R1. I know that Ginger Bremberg was instrumental in getting the area where I live being designated R1, single-family. That's why we buy there. We pay, I could have bought a house in North Glendale for what I paid for my house where I live on Adams Hill. In the recent years, more and more, there have been people buying those homes and building apartments illegally in the underside of the houses, because they're on hillsides, there are areas underneath, and they have been doing it, and over and over, having to put up with it. I have one, who's a next-door neighbor, has one installed in a room over the garage, which is illegal, absolutely, and then another one that was installed under the deck of the house. It was just a deck. They made it into an apartment, and they're renting them out. Now, the reason I'm very angry about this, I want to live. If I want to live in an area where there are two and three rentals in a house, I can go live somewhere else much cheaper. I am fed up. It is affecting the values of my home because there is no parking on the street. When you have 20 houses on a block, and out of that, there are 11 illegal rentals or apartments built into those homes. I've been in every one of them. I know. I'm not just saying this out of the top of my hat. Uh-uh. I've lived there. I see what goes on. It's not right. Why should those people be making money on an illegal rental, and this people who are there, living, are challenging us, who do not have illegal rentals, as to parking? Telling us about, well, I have a right to park there. No, because some of them have driveways, but on some of the houses, there are no driveways. The garage comes right down to the streets, and there's no driveways. So therefore, they don't, even the people in the homes, if they don't use their garages, have to park on the street. And then, on top of it, these people who are illegal renters are parking on the street because the owners don't want them to park in their driveway, naturally. So we're having to contend with this. This is wrong. It's illegal. We have tried reporting it. Do you know what happens when the people go out and ask about these people that have these illegal rentals? And say to them, well, you have an apartment down there? They'll deny it. They say, no, I don't know what you're talking about. Have no idea. Now, is it going to take some kind of a lawsuit to enforce the R1 in our area? Because that's what my area is supposed to be, and it's not. As I say, when you end up with a triplex, where there used to be a single-family when I bought there, the one next to that, they finished the garage in the back, they're renting it out to halfway house, as a halfway house. The one next to that, that's fine, but the next one, and the next one, and the next one, all have illegal apartments. If you want to come, I can go door by door and show you and tell you. And it's not, I mean, it's unbelievable. Everybody just keeps saying, well, why are we allowing this to happen? I've tried calling, and as I said, the response is, oh, well, the inspector went out and he talked to the man that owns the house, and he said, no, I don't have any, I'm not renting it out to anybody, any rooms or any apartments. This is not right. Something has got to be done. It's affecting the quality of our lives and the quality, and our real estate is being affected, the value. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Milano, he said that we made illegal transfers. I think this comes under the heading of reinventing history. We have made no illegal transfers, even in the water. On the advice of Mr. Howard, we deferred pending any legal court cases that would occur in the future, adhered on the side of conservatism, and we stopped. But there's not a single court case in the state that says it was illegal. And the other thing is, comes under the title of hindsight is golden. When I served with Ginger Bremberg, Larry Zarian, Sheldon Baker, Eileen Gibbons back in the '90s, any of these pension or salary increases, if we had been able to see into the future about what was going to occur, we would have thought totally different. But it's one thing to look back and try to put blame on council members that did things a decade ago. We should have known. Well, nobody I served with, anybody wants to start criticizing these council members that I served with, or the next group that came on, you're just wrong. It's good to look back and criticize. The reality is, we did what was, we thought was best for the employees and the city at that time. And I think that happened throughout the state, throughout the nation. And now, we're in a position of, what is it, the new?
Normal.
The new what?
Normal.
New normal. We're having to adjust, and we're not the only city. We're in much better financial shape than most cities around. Every city, regardless, is having to adjust to the new norm. No hindsight, that's great. Thank you.
Maybe staff can come back and give us some sort of report about this issue of single-family homes being converted to apartments. I know that it's a difficult, in terms of code enforcement, but it's something that I'd like to hear back about, how much of a problem this is and what we can do about it and what we have done about it. I know we can't do that tonight because it's not agendized, but... I have spoken to one of Ms. Hammond's neighbors about parking up there, and what he said was happening, and I'm not saying that there's not a problem with illegal conversions, but he said that what he knows is happening is that there are apartment buildings that are two, three blocks away that are zoned for apartments, and that those people are driving and parking in your block. And what we suggested to him was that we would certainly look at permit parking if you're interested, and that would keep away the people that are living a couple blocks, you know, three, four blocks down the road. Maybe they have four cars, three cars, they can't fit them in their spots and are parking them in your neighborhood. So I just offer that as some solution to the parking issues up there. But we will come back, and staff will let us, you know, give us a report about, not just your neighborhood, but this happens in lots of the R1 areas.
Comments? Some new business?
I think Mr. Ochoa.
Would you want me to address that one issue? Going back to Mr. Weaver's question, the issue of the transfer is kind of a red herring. The city had been transferring from GWP water and GWP electrical for many, 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 many years. What happened was the state constitution changed with Prop. 218. City Attorney, then-City Attorney Scott Howard opined that we could not, under the changed constitution, do what had been done previously. And so the City Council, to your credit, you stopped, didn't do that any longer, and now we only transfer from the electrical utility. I think we have demonstrated on the Prop. 218 front and the Prop. 26 front, both of those, it was made mention that we're making illegal transfers, this notion of illegal under the state constitution. I think we've shown very reasonably, very credibly, that that is not illegal, illegal transfer. We've shown how it is compliant. We've shown how the only case law that does exist does fit, as an analogy, that which we do now. There is an issue or a question over the interpretation of our charter and how we actually physically move money from one fund to another fund to another fund into the city's general fund to match the practice that we have done for many, many, many years. And even there, the city attorney's opinion has indicated that we do that in a way that is entirely lawful and plausible under the terms of the charter. Not to say that, you know, other folks can have other opinions, they certainly can, but if the argument is that the way that the city does it has problems, and so too does the theory that is being espoused by other folks. So again, that's a bit of a red herring, especially as you drag it into the issue of infrastructure finance. Very few agencies have the wherewithal, and institutions that have been in place for hundreds of years have the wherewithal to pay for long-term, multi-multi-million-dollar pieces of infrastructure on a pay-as-you-go basis. That's the goal. That's what we're trying to get, but certainly, bond financing, especially in this particular market, is not something that should be necessarily frowned upon as a general rule. If ever you were going to finance, now is the time to do it. This issue of pensions continues to come up, and if you look at the city's CAFRA, the information that was being requested is in the CAFRA. It never left the CAFRA. It's in a different place to meet the formatting standards for the awards that we apply for, but it's still there. And yes, we do have a significant liability, but we also have significant assets to offset that liability. When you look at what this city council has done and previous city councils have done throughout the last 10 years to mitigate and hedge against your pension liability, the state of California could take a huge lesson for you in terms of pension reform by simply doing that which Glendale has already done. What you saw, very celebrated up in Sacramento, was pension reform. Mr. Doyle will give you an overview of it in the coming week, but the idea is that they've adopted, really just adopted, a two-tier program, which, as we've said before, is important. That saves money down the line. But this council has also implemented cost sharing that saves money upfront. The state's pension problems would be much mitigated and perhaps even non-existent had they only done what you had the fortitude to do previously. And it isn't easy, and you saw evidence of its difficulty here tonight with respect to the negotiations with our employees. But at the end of the day, we have to be fiscally responsible. This council's done that, and it really abates much of the other arguments that come up from time to time, sir.
Thank you. Do we have new business? We'll start with Mr. Manukian.
I would like to move that the council of the city of Glendale hereby authorizes the city attorney to institute legal proceedings against Najim Hagopian in order to recover medical and other expenses the city has paid for the benefit of an employee under the Workers' Compensation Insurance and Safety Act.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to move that pursuant to Article 8, Section 1 of the city charter in Government Code, Section 549571, France, A, France 5, council hereby approves the city attorney's appointment of Gillian Van Miden as Chief Assistant City Attorney, and further that a written copy of this motion be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the city of Glendale as and for the written statement required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the charter.
Second. For the vote? Let me say a well-deserved promotion, and I think Ms. Van Miden will do a wonderful job of being the second-in-command, as they say, of the legal army that Glendale employs, both in-house and of council.
And as we were dealing with the earlier issue of land use, I think all the council members were looking at Gillian to see if she was going to forcefully express her opinion, and she did that in a very eloquent manner. So congratulations. Certainly well-deserved.
I'd like to add my congratulations also. Since I've been here, Ms. Van Miden has always been extremely professional and articulate and very, very knowledgeable, and I feel very comfortable with her up here. Even when Mr. Garcia is not here, I feel extremely comfortable with her sitting up on the dais and being our council, so congratulations.
She seems nervous. This is the first time I've seen her nervous.
We haven't voted yet.
Yeah, I know. She's up here every week, and she's on the podium, and she's nervous.
Well, I have Gillian. I've known you, how many years you been here?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and I've been here 16, so, known you since you came. Yeah, I've admired your work in redevelopment, whatever, and this slows down of redevelopment, keeping us informed of what the heck's going on in Sacramento, even on top of it the whole way. So you've done a great job. I know I'll feel very comfortable when he's gone and take his place, and next year, we'll raise him again, see how he works compared to you. Just joking. It's okay. Just joking.
If I could just say, obviously, as you just noted, Mr. Weaver, Gillian's been here for 15 years. She just celebrated her 15th-year anniversary, and she- for 15 years, she just celebrated her 15th year anniversary, and she's currently the General Counsel for Community Development, but we rely on her a lot for a lot of other things in our office, and I'm really excited for the opportunity for her to take an additional leadership role within my office and within the organization, and I look forward to this transition for her.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff, I am...
Do you want us to vote first?
I'd like to vote first.
Oh, no, let her go ahead.
Well, I'll finish my comment. I just am very grateful for the opportunity, and I thank you for the vote of confidence, and I'm very excited to continue to serve the city and to work with staff and with my boss, the city attorney, and support him. It's a wonderful opportunity, and again, I'd just like to express my appreciation for your support. Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Friedman? Okay, that's the last bit of business.
We adjourned?
We are adjourned.